Ready to livestream, so we can begin the meeting.
Great, thank you. I call to order the special meeting of the Beaverton School Board on April twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five, at five oh two P M for the hearing concerning the employment of Vidas Nagasetti. The board is conducting this hearing in public, as a public meeting, at the request of Mister Nagasetti, and is in accordance with O R S three four two eight three five two. Six school board members, or five school board members are present at this time, Susan Greenberg, Sunita, Justice Raji, Tammy Carpenter, and myself, Doctor Karen Perez. Board member Melissa Potter has recused herself and is not present, and we're waiting for Ugana to join when she can. On March eleventh, just a little bit of an overview for everybody, on March eleventh, two thousand and twenty five, the vote, the board voted unanimously to not renew Mister Nagasetti's contract with the District for Employment as a full-time teacher. O R S three four two eight three five two allows a probationary teacher whose contract is not renewed to request a hearing before the school board. The purpose of this hearing is to allow the teacher an opportunity to be heard by the board. The issue the board will consider is whether we have reason to reverse the March eleventh decision to renew Mister Nagasetti's contract. After the hearing, the board will deliberate and may consider whether to vote to overturn the March eleventh, or we may take no further action and the decision will stand. The hearing will be conducted in the following format. Each party will have fifteen minutes to present their position to the school board. Both Mister Nagasetti and members of the board have previously received a written explanation of the reasons for non-renewal. Following each party's presentation, the board will have the opportunity to ask questions, if any, of either party. I will then recess the public meeting and the board will adjourn to an executive session to discuss the information presented. Following the executive session, the board will reconvene in a public meeting, this space here, to close out the hearing. At that time, the board may be, may, may do one of the following. Take no action, allowing the March eleventh decision to stand, or take action to reverse the March decision. When each party is presenting, the other party's mics will remain muted to allow each party to fully utilize their time. We ask that both parties remain respectful throughout the hearing and refrain from speaking out of turn. Parties will be held to the time allotted, and your mic may be muted if you run over the time limit. We will begin the hearing with the district's presentation. So, handing over to the district, thank you, Mister, Mister Guilford. And you'll have fifteen minutes.
Thank you, Chair Perez, and board members for coming together tonight to do this work. It's really hard work, and I think it's really hard work because it's about people, and it's about outcomes for people that have significant implications, whether that be Mister Nagasetti, I S B staff, or most importantly, I S B students. I know I have fifteen minutes to share with you our reasoning for our decision not to have Mister Nagasetti return to I S B, and I'll do this through a narrative timeline of the last few years. I want to mention that I'm joined here by Assistant Principal Kelly Bordwell, who was also integral in the supervision and evaluation of Mister Nagasetti over his time here. So, Mister Nagasetti joined us in his probationary one year with us in the fall of two thousand and twenty two. He had had several years of experience prior to coming here, and he was in multiple schools over that time. Concerns around Mister Nagasetti's teaching surfaced early, based on drop-in observations during the first semester of the two thousand and twenty two, twenty three school year. And these concerns tended to be in a few, a few key areas. One was around student engagement. And when I talk about student engagement, what I'm talking about essentially is that to the casual observer, you should see a certain dynamic when you go into the classroom of student-to-student interactions with a focus on learning, organized direct teaching with clear learning purpose and communication around what successful learning looks like, and students actively asking questions, both for their own clarification, but also to push that learning further. We also had some concerns around just general student support systems. These are systems in class that students can organize their learning, whether those are systems of note-taking, whether those are displays such as posters and anchor charts on the walls, clear use of objectives and criteria for students. Some of that student support also shows up in giving students certain learning tools so they can break down their learning, seeing varied learning activities. So that was another area as well that first year. We also had some concerns around assessment and feedback. In other words, we know that effective teachers have a variety of methods in which they give students feedback on their learning, both on a daily basis and formally, and on a periodic basis more informal, or more formally. We didn't observe these in Mister Nagasetti's class early on, and it's not unusual to have some concerns for a teacher in their first probationary year. It did surprise me, however, because I know that Mister Nagasetti came to us with some years of experience prior to I S B. So during that first probationary year, as he acclimated to I S B, like with all teachers, there are a number of resources that we provided to him in that probationary one year. These included coordination with our I B diploma coordinator to help him sort of wrap his mind around and think through his higher-level courses, coordination with our I B middle-years program coordinator to think through rubrics and assessments and the general sort of I B approach in the middle-years program. We also, like all schools, have an individual who is sort of the focus person for standards-based teaching and learning, for assessment, for student learning systems like Canvas and Synergy, and so he had opportunity to work with that person as well. We provided formal training for Mister Nagasetti in that first year for one of his upper-level math courses, courses within the I B, and then he was offered additional I B training for his middle-years program. I believe I'm correct in the timeline, that summer after his first year, he could attend a workshop, and he was not able to attend that. So during his first probationary year, additional concerns came to us from students and parents. Many students reported feeling lost in class, didn't feel like they were getting their questions answered when they talked to him. I coached those students to continue to reach out to him, to continue to go in during their tutorial times to seek help. Parents also expressed concern, and like we do with all parents, and said, hey, you've got to reach out to him, you've got to talk to him. Parents made mental requests for tutors, if we had access to tutors outside of school as well. And while certainly our, our evaluation and supervisory decisions are not based upon parent and, and student feedback, I think what it did for Miss Bordwell and myself, it sort of confirmed some of the things that we were already seeing, but also alerted to us that some of these concerns might be deeper than we actually realized or anticipated. I mentioned some of those things that were deficits that we saw in our observation over that first year. Feedback was given to him throughout the year, and in his final evaluation for that school year, his overall ranking was basic. I want to say a few words quickly about the evaluation system that we use here, how those ratings, ratings work. There's six different kind of large areas in which a teacher is evaluated upon. Each of those large areas has some indicators, and those are kind of, those indicators are sort of the look-fores that we use as administrators and as supervisors when we go into classrooms, that we then give teachers feedback on. Those descriptors are also good for teachers to use, just for them to get a sense as to sort of what makes good teaching. Ratings go from distinguished on the upper end to proficient, to basic, and to unsatisfactory at the bottom end. In Beaverton School District, the expectation is that teachers are generally teaching at the proficient level. We all have good days, we all have bad days, and so with observations, we'll often see lessons that are in the distinguished category. On one day, we'll be in there, and then something else, we're in there two days later, or four days later, and all of a sudden, it's in the unsatisfactory category. That's typical. There's hard days, there's easy days. And so that tool is not be, being used necessarily for any individual observation, but rather it's for the accumulation of observations and evidence over time. And based upon that accumulation of evidence, we land on one of those ratings, one of those rankings. The rating of basic really indicates that teachers are not teaching in a way that is going to meet the needs of the diverse, the diverse range of needs that we have in our students. Students aren't getting it at a basic level, and for us as administrators, it's sort of where our alarm bells start to go off. As I said earlier, Mister Nagasetti was rated as basic at the end of his first year in multiple areas, which resulted in that overall rating of basic for that year. Next year was his probationary two-year. At the beginning of that year, we saw little growth in reference to those areas. In collaboration with his direct supervisor, Miss Bordwell, Mister Nagasetti set a goal to focus on implementing engagement strategies, including greater student-to-student interaction, more structures for note-taking, and he was encouraged to pre-plan and pre-work through math problems for the guiding of students through specific learning steps. Both Miss Bordwell and myself had noticed on occasions that sometimes his solving of the math problems were convoluted and left students confused, and had to rework at the time once those mistakes became evident. Further observations through the fall of two thousand and twenty three and into the early winter of twenty four revealed that Mister Nagasetti was not making adequate growth. These observations were routinely shared with him, both in writing, as well in face-to-face conferences that we would often do after we met, after we observed him. Suggestions for improvement and often the resources were part of each of those feedback sessions. Because of a lack of growth and improvement, it was decided that Mister Nagasetti needed a more active intervention and support system, so he was placed on a plan of assistance in February of two thousand and twenty four. The length of time designated for the plan of assistance was a two-month period, in which there'd be multiple observations with deep feedback. We also offered him a number of other resources that he could avail himself of. These included outside observations of other teachers, working with a district instructional mentor, working with avid, the avid teacher, avid coordinator on strategies, and continued collaborative time with the I B coordinators to support him on some of those I B approaches. He did avail himself of the district mentor, and he observed two other I S B teachers, though he did that unaccompanied by Miss Bordwell and myself, as we suggested, so that we could debrief. Only minimally met with the I B coordinator and did not connect at all with the avid teacher we recommended for support on instructional strategies for engagement and organization of teaching. Multiple observations were conducted through the course of February and into early March. These were a mix of unannounced drop-ins, but also pre-arranged longer, more formal observations. We wanted to make sure that he could adequately prepare and demonstrate the instructional strategies that we were working on, and so we pre-warned him, hey, here's the date, we're going to come in for those longer observations, do the preparation that you need to be. We knew he was working with a district mentor, so had an opportunity to coordinate with that mentor for some of those more formal observations. The midpoint meeting of the plan of assistance was on March thirteenth of two thousand and twenty four. The valuation given at that time showed Mister Nagasetti's still be at the basic level of most of those focus areas. Spite of the resources provided, little growth was observed. At that time, Mister Nagasetti shared with his supervisors some health issues that were happening in his family. He was informed of his right to a leave of absence, which he chose to take for the remainder of the school year. Plan of assistance was put on hold during that time of his leave and then would be reinstated when he, when he returned that following school year. So he came back in August of two thousand and twenty four, that's this current school year, as probationary three teacher, and we had made some changes to his work assignment in terms of the courses that he was teaching from his probationary two to his probationary three year. And part of that was to reduce the complexity of the courses and produce, reduce the overall number of courses. So in his probationary three year, he was only teaching the A G S one course and the A G S two course, as opposed to those courses, as well as some upper-level I B courses. We'd remove those upper-level I B courses. Wanted him to focus, have to worry about focusing less on content and being able to focus more on the actual instructional strategies that we were hoping that he would grow into. In early October, Mister Nagasetti met with myself and Miss Bordwell to reinstate the unfinished plan of assistance from the prior school year. That updated plan included clear identification, a description of the areas in which he still needed to grow, and a timeline for implementation and improvement. And again, we continue to share resources. Many of those resources were the same ones in terms of human resources, both district mentor, but also various individuals within our building. In addition to that, we also sent him to a training on ambitious math teaching through the Teachers Development Group. And that's a training that is commonly used in Beaverton School District. It's recommended by math instructional leadership throughout our school district and aligns really closely with the types of strategies and approaches that we're hoping our math teachers will, will make use of. During the fall of that year, Mister Nagasetti continued his plan of assistance. We did see occasional improvement. There was some implementation of strategies for more structured student engagement, when put in place, seemed to work. We'd often see these strategies shortly after he had been working with his district mentor. However, the implementation, implementation was not consistent, nor was it sustained. We would go in one day and we'd say, okay, hey, this is starting to look okay, he seems to be taking into, you know, putting into place some of the feedback he's getting, and then we'd be in a few days later, and those strategies, those approaches would be absent. They seem to have gone away again. When we debriefed some of these observations with him, Mister Nagasetti would often become argumentative with us, insist that he had implemented what it was that we were looking for. Continued to offer him resources, reminded him of the ones we'd already shared, and made explicit what the teaching and student experience should look like. Unfortunately, through our observations, we did not see consistent and sustained teaching performance above a basic level in many of those areas. At the end of the plan of assistance, in November, we decided to make a recommendation for dismissal to the superintendent. Mister Nagasetti was placed on paid administrative leave at that time. So as we worked with him, with Mister Nagasetti over the course of probationary year, there, there were some patterns that emerged. There was little progress in many of the areas in which we needed to grow. He made few to no changes in his teaching based up on the feedback he was given, and in some cases seemed to be unwilling to acknowledge a need to change in some of those areas. Supports that we put into place along the way, we felt were often underutilized or not accessed. But most importantly, students continued to struggle to learn in his class and did not appear to be making the gains and growth that was necessary for them to ultimately be successful in mathematics. And it was for those reasons that Miss Bordwell and myself made that decision to recommend termination. I'm aware that in this presentation for you now, one of the things that we, we are not sharing with you or did not share, in great detail at least, were those specific areas of teaching and learning that we're referring to, that we worked on with him throughout that time. And I know that some of that has been provided with, to you already through copies of his plan of assistance and copies of the final, the final recommendations we had, as well as some copies, I believe, of the evaluations at the end of the school year and examples of evaluations that happened along the way. I think some of that had already been shared. So obviously, we're happy to answer any questions of those, but I'm trying to be mindful of time. We don't take, obviously, our decision lightly. We recognize the huge impact that this has on an individual. And it's hard when you develop a relationship with that person over time as well, I want to put that in there. Mister Nagasetti is a kind person. He's intellectually curious. There are kids who like him, and he likes them. We see that in this situation. I believe that he loved being here at I S B. However, ultimately, we feel that we have to do this because we're watching students continue to struggle, and we're not seeing the pieces put in place that we need to see put in place to help those students and support them in that way. So thank you for your time. I know that was long and a little bit worried, wordy, but Miss Bordwell and myself, we take what we do seriously, and we wanted to make sure you had the full picture from our perspective. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Guilford. We are now here from Mister Nagasetti, and you'll have fifteen minutes.
Okay, I'm going to share a video with you. Are you able to see it?
I am not. There we are.
How about, okay. This is fifteen minutes.
Hello, my name is Vidas Nagasetti. I've been a public secondary school teacher for eleven years, most recently at the International School of Beaverton. I thank you for this opportunity to be heard. On March eleventh, two thousand and twenty five, the superintendent Gustavo Valderas recommended my non-renewal as a teacher within the district to this board, based on the results of a plan of assistance. I am here today before you to defend myself against this recommendation and to petition for renewal and reassignment. I will give data showing that during the plan of assistance, I was on a positive trajectory, and I met the district's standard for proficiency. I will provide context showing that I was coerced and intimidated to resign in exchange for a letter of recommendation. I will conclude by showing further evidence that I am a good teacher. On April tenth, two thousand and twenty five, I received a letter from the superintendent notifying me of his reasons to recommend my non-renewal. In his letter, the superintendent points out that as a probationary teacher, I may be non-renewed for, quote, "any cause considered in good faith sufficient," end quote. The cause he gives is as follows. Quote, "I have not found persuasive evidence to suggest the demonstrated and documented pattern of inadequate performance exhibited in your two years as a probationary teacher is on a trajectory for the improvement necessary to meet standards," end quote. But here's what the data says. The superintendent's language around my trajectory and pattern of performance is extremely harsh and not justified. Trajectories and patterns are quantifiable, yet he does not consider any quantitative interpretation of my evaluations. He neglects to do this despite the fact that the district has a scoring guide for evaluations, which quantifies performance using five D plus rubric scores and categorizes them into final ratings. When you apply the district's scoring guidelines, you will see that the trajectory and pattern of my performance is the opposite of what the superintendent claims. You will also see that my final rating at the second midterm meeting of the plan of assistance was proficient, as defined by the district, and it continued to improve until the conclusion. The district's scoring guide, as found on a summative evaluation like this, computes a final rating by taking the indicator average from the thirty different five D plus rubric criteria and categorizes the result. Each basic score is two points, each proficient score is three points. I earned a total of eighty-two points on this evaluation. This is then divided by thirty to give the indicator average. On this evaluation, my indicator average was two point seven three. A teacher with a two point eight one or greater is rated proficient in the Beaverton School District. Applying the district's scoring guidelines to the evaluations given during the subsequent plan of assistance shows that my indicator average was two point seven at the outset, two point eight at the first midterm meeting, two point eight three at the second midterm meeting, and two point eight seven at the conclusion. Thus, I showed proficiency prior to the conclusion of the plan, and my trajectory was always positive. Any claim that the trajectory of my performance was somehow in the wrong direction is not supported by the data. Neither is any claim that I'm incapable of meeting standards. The cause given by the superintendent is disproved by the evidence he provided and is not, in good faith, sufficient. My final rating exceeded the district's standard for proficiency. I believe this should suffice to show that I am undeserving of non-renewal, but I have other reasons. My first job in the Beaverton School District was at A C M A in two thousand and sixteen. I taught A G S one and accelerated Math seven eight. Iron scores are three out of four in every category of the district's rubric from the time. This shows I am capable of showing proficiency in every criteria. I have already done so in the past. Unfortunately, my position at A C M A was temporary. My administrators tried to create a job for me there. I could not accept the position because the F T E was below the threshold for district-paid benefits. My wife worked part-time without benefits, and we had a newborn and a two-year-old to care for. Between A C M A and I S B, I taught math in several different schools and districts in pursuit of finding full-time permanent employment. From the time I was deemed proficient at A C M A to the time I came to I S B, I never took a break from teaching math. I grew as a math teacher through the experience. My first year at I S B, I taught A G S two and I B math. This was all new curricula for me. On my evaluation, my indicator average was two point seven three, which is eight hundredths of a point below the threshold for a final rating of proficient, two point eight one. During my second year at I S B, I was put on a plan of assistance. The areas of concern were P two and five, S E one, four and five, C P three and five, and A three and four. I changed my practice based on my administrator's suggestions and advice from a district mentor. As the midterm meeting approached, it seemed that all of the administrators' post-observation notes were either positive or neutral. I asked the principal if my reading was correct, and he replied in an email that it was. At the midterm meeting in March, three criteria for which I had originally been marked as basic, S E five, C P five, and A three, had been moved up to a mark of proficient. Furthermore, in the administrator's feedback, every single criteria had the comment, quote, "improvement noted for this indicator," end quote. This is important because it shows that my trajectory was towards a final rating of proficient. Days prior to the midterm meeting, my mother suffered a heart attack. At the meeting, I informed all parties. I applied for leave that evening to help my mother and to care for my father, who had late-stage Parkinson's, since she was no longer able to. I was on family medical leave for the rest of the school year. Over the summer, my father died, and my marriage ended in divorce. I returned to I S B at the start of the two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty five school year, this time primarily teaching A G S one, which, as I mentioned, I had taught prior at A C M A and was then evaluated as proficient in all district rubric categories. A little over a month in, without ever revisiting my classroom, the principal restarted the plan of assistance. I was asked to align my pivot goals with the plan. I did this and created action steps that detailed specifically what I would do to show proficiency in the administrator's remaining areas of concern. This is one example. I kept copies of these action steps in several places in my classroom to serve as reminders, and I adhered to them throughout the plan. However, my administrators never addressed the action steps at any point. I provided my lesson plans to the administrators throughout the plan of assistance and followed them. I bolded for emphasis the ways in which I would purposely take action to address their concerns. I also aligned them with my action steps. I had regular meetings and communication with a mentor and attended a district math training. I immediately implemented the strategies and methods I learned. I also implemented the suggestions given in post-observation feedback from my administrators. I worked diligently. At the October twenty eighth midterm meeting of the plan of assistance, I was marked proficient in one more category, P two. My indicator average met the standard of proficient, as defined by the district. At the conclusion of the plan of assistance, I was marked as proficient in another category, C P three. Furthermore, positive remarks were given by the administrators for S E one, S E four, and A four. This shows again that my trajectory was positive, even after meeting the district's standard for proficient. Despite this, the principal recommended me for termination. The bar he had set to define success in the plan of assistance was that my final evaluation could not have any rubric category scored less than proficient. The criteria for success set by the principal was out of line with the The criteria for success set by the principal was out of line with the district's own definition of proficiency. If you do the math, the district's evaluation scoring guidelines allow a teacher to be marked basic in up to five criteria. And still earn a final rating of proficient if all of the criteria are marked proficient. My principal had the option to recommend non-renewal, but he didn't. He chose termination despite the data, the consequence that would be most likely to end my career. As if I posed some threat or was completely unfit to teach. His actions were malicious. At the final plan of assistance meeting, the principal offered to write me a letter of recommendation if I resigned by three thirty PM the following day. That is, the same person recommending my termination, ostensibly because I was an incorrigibly bad teacher. Was offering to write a letter of recommendation for me to use to find employment in another school in another district. I did not resign. In the plan of assistance meetings, when I tried to dispute the principal's claims, I was told by the attending HR administrator, Janine Mobley. That I would have the opportunity to bring my disputes before the board on December ninth. If I resigned, I would lose this right. I was also told that the board has never found in favor of the teacher in these situations. Then on December fifth, HR told me that I would not be able to go before the board on December ninth. On December nineteenth, I met with the head of HR, Susan Rodriguez. She assured me that if I went before the board, the result would be my immediate termination. I asked her to reach out to my prior administrators from Acma, my district mentor during the plan of assistance, and one of my former professors. All of whom could speak to my work ethic and abilities. For my part, she asked that I take more time to consider resigning. We met again on January sixteenth. At that meeting, she said that she had met with three of the four people I asked her to. She asked if I gave more thought to resigning. I said I would not resign and I preferred to make my case before the board. I asked her to reach out to the one person she had not spoken to, the retired principal of Acma. With whom I had just met the week prior to discuss my case. In February, I received a letter from the superintendent saying that he would be recommending me for non-renewal. He gave me the deadline of March third to respond as to whether I would still request a hearing before the board. And to be provided the reasons for which he was recommending my non-renewal in writing. I responded requesting both. Finally, on April tenth, the superintendent sent me the letter giving the reasons for his recommendation and providing a hearing date. As I mentioned earlier, the superintendent's data fails to show that I did not meet the district's standards or that my trajectory was not positive. If I'm being held to a different standard than what is found in the district evaluation guidelines, then I would like to know why. And I would also request an additional opportunity to show with evidence that I am proficient in every criteria. When the principal recommended me for termination and tried to coerce my resignation by offering to write a letter of recommendation. It spoke to his integrity and undermined his credibility. The same goes for HR who supported this. At that meeting were Principal Andrew Guilford, Assistant Principal Kelly Boardwell. And the Executive Administrator for Human Resources, Janine Mobley, all of whom supported the principal's offer. My union representative was also present. When HR told me on more than one occasion that a hearing before the board would result in termination, it seemed like they were trying to scare me. They wanted me to resign, to forfeit my right to defend myself. They also delayed my hearing before the board for nearly five months. The superintendent's disparaging remarks and recommendation for non-renewal are intimidation. They are not justified by the data. All of this shows that these people wanted me to resign and to not go before the board. Renewal is the only way my career will continue. Resignation is not an option. When looking at other districts' job applications, it's clear that resigning, being forced to resign, being terminated. Or even just being put on administrative leave are all red flags. Non-renewal is also a red flag. It will be extremely difficult to get a job at another district. Renewal within this district is the only way my career will be preserved. The superintendent and HR know this. The superintendent's cause given is neither sufficient nor in good faith. I've just provided you with evidence that my performance has shown nothing but improvement. Was on a trajectory to show proficiency in all rubric categories. And earned a final rating of proficient by the district's own definition. I've also provided you with the context of my request for this hearing and evidence to support. That the principals, HR and superintendent were acting in bad faith. I will now provide further evidence that I am a good teacher, worthy of renewal. Here are twelve letters of recommendation that I received over my teaching career. They are from past administrators, teachers who have seen me teach, instructional coaches, mentors and my professors. None of these recommendations were given in exchange for my resignation. Here are several examples of student appreciation. In their design class, students chose to make charms and stickers themed around our interactions and some of the math they learned. When I was on family medical leave, students made a card for me with art inspired by our time together in class. Many also signed it with comments like, I am one of the best teachers they ever had. When I came back in the fall of twenty twenty-four, my new students wrote me a card praising my dedication to teaching. This has been an extremely stressful experience, traumatic even. All the gaslighting for so long. I've been terrified of the future every day since February sixth of last year. Every fiber of my being has been focused on preserving my career. I appreciate the support I've received from the few people in whom I've confided. It's been a solitary hell. I've been careful not to speak openly about this prior to today because I feared how it would negatively affect my children if they found out. They've already suffered through a lengthy divorce and their grandfather's death. It has not been easy pretending everything's all right, when in fact it is not. I am a proficient teacher as defined by the district. I was coerced to resign in exchange for a letter of recommendation. The principals, HR and superintendent acted in bad faith. The superintendent's reasons for his recommendation are not in good faith sufficient. Non-renewal will end my career undeservedly. I am a good teacher. I ask that you consider all of this and allow my renewal. I rest my case.
Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Nagasetti. The board will now go, or actually now that we've heard testimony from Mr. Nagasetti and from the district. Do board members have any questions for either party? And please avoid questions that um are leading. And it's uh recommended to focus on clarifying questions if the board has any at this time. Um, Representative Carpenter?
Thank you, and I see Ugana's hand as well. Um, Mr. Guilford, um, did you rec- uh. Consider non-renewal over termination? Um, that seems like an important distinction that I would like to understand better. And how you came to that decision, um, if you could share your thinking on that?
Uh, I'll answer first and it's possible that either uh Janine Mobley or Susan Rodriguez might want to jump in on this at first. The plan had terminated in November. And we, based upon our observations, we had made the decision that um students were not learning the way they needed to be in that classroom. November is a long way from June and non-renewal happens at the end of the school year. And so for me as a principal, I want to create the best possible experience. And so I mind at the time, if we didn't, we're not going to continue to have a teacher there, then we needed to act on that in that moment.
Thank you.
Um, we'll go with Ugana and then Sunita?
Oh, thank you, um, to both parties. Um, the question I have is. Uh, Mr. Guilford, uh, based on your presentation. Uh, you, your, your argument is that um he did not meet the proficiency criteria. I hope I'm using the right word. But then he presented evidence that he actually did meet those criteria. Is there a reason why there is a discrepancy there? Because I'm hearing one thing. From you and his testimony uh shows something different. I would like to get some clarifications on that.
Susan or Janine, do either of you want to jump in and talk about how those rating systems work? Um, I have some answers to this, but I didn't know if either of you want to contribute to that also.
Uh, I'll, um, I'll just mention regarding the rating systems on the evaluation. That as um Principal Guilford mentioned before, there are six domain areas with multiple indicators under each. And then for the Oregon Department of Education, as shown in Mr. Nagasetti's uh video. There is a range to, to give a um, a proficiency score to the state. What I'm not as familiar with is how the scoring played out in the plan of assistance. I would rely on the school um supervisors to talk a little bit more specifically about the ratings. Uh, in the plan of assistance, and I think those were referenced in Mr. Nagasetti's um video as well, so. Uh, Kelly and Andrew, you might speak a little bit more for, for that piece.
Uh, for us in the plan of assistance, those ratings didn't play out at all. We did not actually comp- compute ratings in that way at the midpoints or at the end of the plan of assistance. Those ratings usually go into place at the end of a school year when a final evaluation. Based upon all of those criteria from all of those domain go into place. I don't know exactly how Mr. Nagasetti arrived at that, but I imagine he did those ratings based upon. Only the areas that we had in that plan of assistance for that focus at that time. But that was, those were not numbers that we came up with. Those were not numbers that we generated.
Do you want me to explain how I got them?
You can go ahead.
Uh, in the document that Mr. Valderas sent, if you look at the, each of the plan of assistance um. Documents, the final one, the midterms. Uh, the, the district rubric is there, the six buckets are there, all of the individual indicators are there. But like Mr. Guilford said, they didn't bother to tally up the scores if it was a, an evalu- a, a summit of evaluation and. Um, if you, if you look there, you, you will see next to those indicators on, on the document Mr. Valderas shared. That I had moved up to proficiency as I described in my, in my presentation. Um, you'll also see written in plain English text underneath those, those criteria in which I moved up, written by the administrators. This criteria is marked proficient. Um, so it, it's just a matter of looking at the, the evidence that Mr. Valderas provided. And then tallying up like what's really going on here. Well, you know, they, they can, you can say all you want negatively about a person, but when. The data is right in front of you that there's actually positive growth and trajectory is positive. Um, all those words don't really mean that much. They're not supported. By the data and the data is there. You can, you can look in the document um and just tally it up for yourself or if you like, I can.
Thank you.
Show you how to do that, yeah.
Yeah, we have access to those documents. Ugana, did you have anything else? No, okay, Sunita? Oh, you're muted.
Thanks to both of you. Um, there's a lot of information, so I tried to put it in a timeline manner. And I had some clarification question on uh. Three points, the one, the first one was the purpose section, uh, where the um. The plan of assistance criteria uh said that they were going to look into P two and P five. And um, when they did the twenty-two, twenty-three review, the P two and P five, he was already proficient. And the notes that they put in there said that. Uh, he had improvement in those areas, so I had a hard time understanding how can he be proficient and then slide down to basic. So, I, and then same thing for uh student engagement, um. There was uh, two SE four, they were going to look into that. Uh, opportunities and support for meaning-making and he was already proficient in that. And the note said that he was improving, but then he was slight, he was slighted to basic, so how does that happen? And um, so that's my one question and then I have another one for Mr. Nagasetti.
Uh, I'll answer this and then uh Kelly Boardwell, if there's anything you want to add to this one, jump in as well. I mean, I think the, the word I tried to use a couple times in the presentation was sustained. And um, each time an evaluation was given. That had a rating, you know, from unsatisfactory all the way up to distinguished on that scale. It was based upon. The series of observations that preceded that. And so, um, we were not giving. That feedback, those ratings feedback on an observation to observation, but more. After midway through a plan, after we'd probably been into his classroom. I don't know, seven or eight times at the end of the plan, where we'd have totaled up to sixteen times or so that we were in those classrooms. And so, that shifted. Um, there were times where things were strong and they did slide back. Um, and there were times where things were not as strong and there was some growth that we saw happening. Um, but what we were not seeing was sort of a consistency at the proficient level, um, or sustaining, sustaining that level over time. Kelly, I don't know if that, that covers it, if there's things you want to add to, add to that at all.
No, I think that that, that covers it. I, I think going back to the um, sort of the discussion about the overall rating system. I think it's important to understand that each of those buckets, we have limited, we have some very specific things that he was working on with us. But those buckets have a lot of other indicators in them. So, uh, we wouldn't just take a handful of the, the different indicators and rate those together. Each bucket is rated separately with very specific indicators that contribute to really being proficient in that category.
Thank you. Um, Ug- uh, Sunita, you had another question, you said?
Yeah, uh, for Mr. Nagasetti, there were um. Three things that, hold on, let me get back to my sheet, um. There was, there was um, three main things that I saw that they needed growth and one was um. Group collaboration protocols to support students to clarify their thinking with one another. Did you, uh, can you talk about that? Did you use that in your classroom or?
Yeah, if you, if you, um, well, I, I'm gonna. I will send you a, 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 a link to the video and a copy of PDF copy of the presentation. In the video, the presentation I just gave. It, I know they passed by quickly, but there's a slide where I talk about my lesson plans. And in the lesson plans, you can see bolded that there's, there's several activities where there's group collaboration. One is where students make index cards, creating problems with different domains, whether they're discrete. Um, or continuous, this is mathematical terminology, but. And then they exchange the cards and they do a, a, a collaboration critique of, over them. Um, and then later on. Anyway, I, I would direct you to that slide, um.
Okay, I thi- I think I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, Tammy?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Ms. McCann, are you here as Mr. Nagasetti's um, union rep?
I am, yes.
Excellent. Um, is there anything that we're missing? Is there anything, any I's not dotted, T's not crossed? Is there anything um procedural that has been missed that I should be aware of? Um, or any other story to be told here that, that we haven't yet heard?
Well, I think that the procedurally, I mean. The process such as it exists in Beaverton, uh, this was consistent with that process. Question you might want to ask or if you've got asked in the future is, what does the plan of assistance look like and does it sort of educate as well? And is it consistently, but let's be honest, we're with today's questions. Um, in terms of additional story, I think Vidas did a really, a, a good job of telling his story. So I'm gonna let him first to put his stuff.
Do, do any board members have any more questions before we go into an executive session? Oh, sorry, Ugana, I think that was.
So, um, the, the last question I have is for Mr. um, Nagus- Nagasetti. I, I apologize about botched your name, please bear with me. Um. Mr., Mr. Guilford testified that um, at some point he made improvements and you were um implementing the plans. That were given to you and then sometimes they'll come and then you're not uh implementing those plans. Are you able to speak on that uh part of his testimony? Is there anything that you can speak to regarding that? I want to understand how you were able to implement. Uh, plans that your mentors gave you and at, at points you're not using those plans. Um, can you speak to that, please?
Uh, I mean, I might need a little clarification on the question. Uh, you know, they, they start with the, these criteria, the, the nine. That they started with and then we talk about specific act, I mean, for example, the action steps I made that are in my presentation. Um, you know, they gave me language around, okay, we, this is what we need to see for proficiency. And, and then so I turned that language and, and you can see it on the pivot goals and I'm, you should have access to the. The pivot documents that show my goals and my action steps. So each of the nine criteria that they had listed me as basic in. Has its description and then they, they gave me actual descriptions of what proficiency looks like. And then I translated those things into action steps that would show proficiency according to what they specifically asked for. Um, and then from there, as I mentioned, I. Um and then from there, as I mentioned, I made that part of my practice, um is that? Is that what you're asking about?
I I guess so, because I know that he had mentioned that some improvements were seen. And then other times they would come and you're not implementing strategies given to you by by your mentors.
Well, you know, so he said in his in his comments, he said, oh, we would come in and then a few days later. We wouldn't see this, for I want to talk about that for a second, because and he also said it was a two-month um plan, it was a six-week plan. Um in the second plan of, in this plan assistance that restarted in the fall. Um they came in once, well. Each administrator came in once a week, except for the last week, only Mr. Guilford came in. They didn't come in a couple days later, it would be o- o- over a week before they they came in again. Um so what they would necessarily see uh is a snapshot of a week later. Um secondly, um. The there are things that I I just, I I don't think that. He's being, well, I mean, like I I mentioned, if if I'm being asked to like show proficiency in every single category of the rubric. Um I I believe that I I'm hit that mark, it's just I don't, in fifteen minutes, I don't have time to go through those details, but. There are things that he was saying I wasn't doing that I I was doing, and I have evidence to show that.
I'm gonna ask us to, um if you could wrap up your thought, Mr. Nagasetti.
I mean, yeah, I I'm, you know, I think that's my thought, it's. Um there there's always. You know, I I tried to do this with structure, with the action steps, with the lesson plans, and then as far as their observations go. They were not that frequent because it's a six-week plan. Um so you have these this this set of feedback from, you know, one observation per week. Sometimes the observations were done by both administrators at the same time, so it'd be one observation. Uh set of notes from from both of them, and then the last week I got one observation, so um. You know, in general, I was constantly trying to implement whatever feedback I got from them. Um and con- communicating with them with updated lesson plans based on. Any new feedback they gave me or anything that happened in the in the lessons in the days prior, so thank you for your question, I'm sorry. That was convoluted, but um.
Um we need to go into an executive session, but I see one more um question, Tammy.
I just, before we head into executive session, can someone state um one more time what is before? Um the board, um so that the community knows and it reminds me, um and and if there's any clarification needed from HR or. Um Camelia, we can hear from her, so can you just restate that for us, please?
Yes, let me pull that up, so I can read it exactly, um. So um during this, when we adjourn, we're gonna go into executive session to discuss the information presented. And then following the executive session, the board will reconvene in a public meeting to close the hearing. Um at this time, the board may do one of the following. So if we take no action, which means that allowing the March eleven decision to stand. Or we can take an action to reverse the March decision. So either reverse or we don't, is what our question is, um Camelia or staff, did I miss anything on that one? Okay.
Then could we've like, if we wanted to reverse, would we make a recommendation of like? Uh a additional recommendation, or the only question before us is re- is to reverse or not reverse, and then. You know, for example, if we decided to reverse, then something else would happen, but we don't necessarily control that, or um.
I'll let Camelia answer that.
I was just gonna say, Tammy, in executive session, I can advise you to sort of those legal parameters of of those pieces. I won't be speaking to what the presentations are, but can give you guys guidance around the legal parameters.
Excellent, you'll be there, I appreciate that, that's, that'll that'll help a lot.
With that, I will close um this part.
I just wanted to let you know that I sent in via email. A PDF copy of my presentation as well as a link to the video, I just, before you go into session, I want you to have that, so.
Thank you. Um so I will close this part of our meeting, and we'll head into executive session for um the board, we have. Uh another Zoom that we'll go into, and then we'll come back. Um I know we were supposed to go till six, but we'll maybe send a notice ten, fifteen minutes before we come back, thank you.
I think we're missing a few board members. We're just trying to get back to the other link. Two, three. I think we're all back. Sunita, I think you're back, correct? Um, I don't know. Do I need to reopen this meeting? Yes, I'll just note that we're back and we'll be reopening our meeting at 6:26 PM on April 8th. Um, I just first let me thank both parties for being here and presenting this evening. After careful consideration for all the information presented, both tonight's hearing and written record, the board is not going to take any further action regarding our March 11th decision for non-renewal of the employment contract of Mr. Nagasetti, and this will conclude our hearing. So thank you to both parties, and I don't know if HR follows up or Camellia or next steps for from here.
Yeah, HR will be in contact with Mr. Nagasetti.
Okay, thank you. If you could copy me on that correspondence, that'd be great.
You bet.
Thank you.
With no other agenda items, I call the April 8th, 2025 business meeting of the Beaverton School Board adjourned at 6:27 PM. Have a good night, everybody.
The April 29th special meeting.
April 29th special meeting is adjourned at 6:27 PM. Thank you.